Motion.
Second.
And a second.
Yes, we do.
Okay, Madam President, roll call, please.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries three zero. Thank you. Claims, are there any additional claims?
Not at this time.
Pleasure to the board. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
And Rob Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries three zero. Any reports from staff?
No reports, Mr. President.
Okay, any reports from Water Board members?
No.
No.
There is no old business under new business. We have a public hearing. Mr. Oshin, are the proofs of publication in order?
I'd refer to your clerk, please.
Oh, Christie, are the...
Yes.
Proof of publication, okay. Thank you. Jim, you want to explain a little?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Getzloff. This is a resolution recommending an increase in the town's water rates. This is a pass-through rate. In other words, Indiana American Water Corporation, which is the... We receive wa... We buy water from them. They petitioned the Indiana American Water Corporation... Or the... I'm sorry, the I U R C, Indiana Regulatory Commission, to raise the rates for all wholesale customers, which Shererville is one of. So we are simply passing on these rates to our ratepayers. We don't... It's just a pass-through. Whatever they raised it, we passed it through. We've been fighting this for several months now, this rate increase. Indiana American went in front of the I U R C to increase that pass-through to fifty percent. I think we... It ended up coming in just under thirty, twenty-eight percent or so. So what that's going to do is, for a regular average four thousand gallon a month customer, it'll... To have a second rate increase next year, so we will use that next year right around this time.
Thank you. And then if Mr. Oshin's been deep into this too, if he has any comments left out.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, Jim hit most of the points smack on. This is a long process. We've been involved with this for over a year. We've been actively involved in the protection of the ratepayers here in town by virtue of participation directly. There are no increases that are attributable to town government, town municipal utilities, but only to the order issued by the I U R C. There is an order. If this ordinance adoption process did not complete itself, Indiana American still will be entitled to collect these increased rates. There's an order that says it, so this is a necessity for us to maintain status quo, and that's a pass-through.
Thank you, Mr. Oshin. At this time, I would welcome the floor to any public comment regarding this and remarks on the floor. Seeing none or hearing none, the floor is closed. Resolution 2024 dash two is a resolution of the Department of Water Works, Board of Directors of the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, recommending an increase in the wholesale water tracker component of the rates and charges collected by the Town of Shererville Municipal Water Utility and all matters related thereto. Pleasure to the board.
Mr. President, motion to approve Resolution 2024 dash two.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Christie, can you call the roll call?
Yes. Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes. Motion carries three zero. At this time, I will take any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, and we will go right into redevelopment. Call to order the redevelopment commission meeting for Wednesday, May eighth, 2024, at time of seven fifteen P. M. By the way, Saturday, we're late coming into the meeting room this evening. The redevelopment commission consists of the entire council, so we'll bring in council members Caleb Johnson and Tom Schmidt, and we also have our advisor with us this evening, Nicole Kelly, from the Lake Central School Board. First item, minutes of the April tenth, 2024, public meeting. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes. Passes five zero. Claims, any additional claims for us?
No additional claims.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And another roll call, please.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes. Thank you. Any reports from staff on redevelopment? We have twenty-two West.
Twenty-two West? Yeah, we... Twenty-two West, as everybody knows, is just to the west of Town Hall here. We do have a sale agreement draft, and right now, we're just waiting for title work on that property before we can sell it. As you all know, it was six parcels of property. Now, it's a one-lot subdivision, so their title company's putting that all together.
We should have this on the June agenda.
Yes.
Very good. Great progress.
Thank you.
Any other reports from council members on redevelopment?
No.
No.
No? Okay, we have no old business. We have four items under new business we're going to try to cover in one motion. I'll begin with Resolution 2024 dash one, and we have dash two, dash three, dash four. Mr. Gorman, do you want to...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. There's four separate resolutions before you this evening. The R D C is required under Indiana Code to make certain determinations related to its need to capture TIF revenues for the following budget year. The R D C is also required to notify each affected taxing unit of this meeting. All have received notification. Anticipated TIF revenues collected in 2024 are needed in 2025 to meet the commission's outstanding debt service and other purposes. Attached to each resolution are the TIF district's worksheet showing anticipated TIF revenues and expenditures. All TIF revenues collected are expected to be used for the purpose prescribed under Indiana Code. Upon... Acted upon this evening, a written notice of the determination of this resolution or these resolutions will be made to the Lake County Auditor, the Shererville Town Council, and to each of the taxing units that are located within the TIF allocation area by June fifteenth of 2024. The Department of Local Government Financing, D L G F, will receive it in electronic format. Thank you. You have any questions?
No. They go up. I don't have any questions. I haven't answered any questions. I'll indicate a motion to cover all four agenda items.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Resolution 2024 dash one, two, three, and four, the resolution of the Shererville Redevelopment Commission concerning the 2025 budget year determination for the need to capture increment assess valuation within the Kennedy Avenue Allocation Area, the Plum Creek Precision Allocation Area, the Shops on Main Allocation Area, and the Iliana Speedway Route Thirty Corridor. I move to approve.
Second. Roll call, please.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Ward?
Yes, Mr. Oshin.
Will you direct the recording secretary to verbatim identify the titles of the resolutions for the minutes of this meeting when they're prepared?
Thank you, Mrs. Steele.
Thank you.
All right. Well done, everybody. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, May eighth, 2024, at seven twenty P. M. First on the agenda would be roll call of the meeting. It remains the same as the previous meeting of the Redevelopment Commission. So next on the agenda would be the minutes of the April tenth, 2024, public meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Yes. Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Motion carries... The minutes are approved five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have claims. Are there any additional claims?
Not at this time.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve claims. Can we have a roll call?
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes. Claims are approved five to zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Are there any staff reports regarding the Utility Board? Any staff reports?
No reports, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any council reports regarding the Utility Board?
No.
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 Thank you. There is no old business on the agenda under new business. Consider the engagement letter with L W G CPAs for financial advisory service as it relates to establishing a useful storm water utility, ready?
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Gorman?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a... An agreement with our financial advisors to take a look at our stormwater facilities to see if we need to impose a fee or not. The town is actually on the last year or so. Start... Started doing the inventory of all of our stormwater utilities and maintenance structures, and unfortunately, they're in pretty bad shape. There's a lot of these... A lot of these culverts going under roads that are steel-gapped and ice piping, and they're in pretty bad shape. We actually have a... A one-point-three-million-dollar project going on in one of our subdivisions that the... One of these type of pipes is just... It's been crushed from the top. They just... They don't last. We're replacing them with PVC piping that lasts. It's got a fifty-year life on it, I believe. Under near-life on it. So we're looking to have them do a study to see if we actually need to put a fee in place. That's what's in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure to the board?
Madam President, I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes. Motion approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, do we have any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the agenda for the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, May eighth, at approximately seven twenty-three P. M. The first item is the roll call, which will stay the same as the Utility Board, all five members. First item on the agenda is the minutes of April tenth, 2024, public meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Yes. Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is claims. Any additional claims, Christie?
Not at this time.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call for claims.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next item is reports. I'll start to my left. Our I T, Robbie Hanson?
No reports.
Our Fire Chief, Bob Patterson?
No reports.
Our Deputy Chief, Dave Meyer?
No reports, sir.
Our Assistant Police Chief, Steve McAmeyer?
Just one report. I just want to let everyone know that the National Police Week is coming up. It's going to be observed May twelfth through May eighteenth this year. The Sheriff of Police Department is going to be having a memorial service on the seventeenth. It's actually going to be here inside the Town Quarter, Town Hall here at one P. M. Before that, eleven-thirty, we're going to be doing vehicle inspections with all of our officers outside in uniform, and vehicle inspections. And that'll... Everyone's welcome to come to that, too. So we're inviting everyone to come here. You guys can make use of it.
Thank you, Speaker. Our Park Superintendent, John Novic?
Thank you, Mr. President. One item. There'll be a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the completion of the C D B G Playground Project at Allen Creek Park Saturday, May eighteenth, at ten A. M.
Thank you, Mr. Novic. I was writing it down. Thank you. Our Town Engineer, Neil Simstead?
No reports, Mr. President.
Public Works Director, Chad Nandor?
Nothing to report.
Our Director of Operations, Amy Hansen?
No reports.
Town Manager, Jim Gorman?
No reports.
Any council members on reports?
No report.
Okay. At this time, next item is public comments. Is there any public comments regarding agenda items only? There's a... Yes, please step up and name and address, please.
Justin Mora, six-three-six, East Juliet Street.
Can you get... Pull the mic up, yes, please.
Justin Mora, six-three-six, East Juliet Street. I just wanted the council to look over my variants for chickens.
Yep. It's in a gen item, yes. Is there any other public comments regarding agenda items?
Hello, Jeff Minar, twelve-seventy-nine, Poppy Field. I'm just asking that the Town Council keep an open mind about chickens. I... You know, I have no desire for chickens myself. That's me. But there's several large municipalities that allow chickens, and it almost feels like it's a... It's a payback to the Town Council member that had chickens at one time, so... Just asking all of you to keep an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments regarding agenda items? No other public comments. We'll move right into our next item, is a presentation. Kathy LaRue is here, our St. John Township trustee, and... And... And, yeah. Please step up.
I'm Bob Kernke from D A V.
Hi, Bob. Welcome, both of you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having us and having us on the agenda. We just wanted to come tonight just to say, as you know, we're at... There's going to be another D A V walk at the Town of Shererville, and myself and D A V are co-hosting, and that's going to be started in front of the police station, and then we're going to go over to Reader Park. So first of all, just wanted to tell you all thank you again for your partnership, and also, we wanted to give you an update. So we have been working, our group that the planners... Did they have me flyer, Bob? You don't have me updated to D A V one, do you? He'll grab... He'll grab that for you. So, but... So the plan... The group that has been planning or the team has been Jim Gorman and Andy Hansen, and Chief Sormoz, myself, and Bob Kernke, and Steve Bramer, who's also with D A V. And so we have been to the other two Town Council meetings, the other two towns, and what our goal is is for everyone to see that this is not a Shererville event or it's not any one of our events, but it's an actual St. John Township walk, and it benefits all the veterans in the township. So we've gone before the other two towns. We've invited them, explained that this is the perfect location. We have the St. John Township War Memorial, everything. Everyone did such an awesome job last year working it and coordinating it. But the plan is, is that not only will we talk and explain about the War Memorial and the nine-eleven memorial, but the Town of Dyer also has now a monument, and it's the Gold Star Family. So we want to showcase all of those that are within the township. We also... So each one, when at the beginning of the ceremony, each one, we will showcase and have someone speak on. And then we... The goal was to add more this year, and the hopes also to draw in families. As we've said before, we know our freedom isn't free, and we need to have that younger generation see what sacrifices have been made, and we're hoping that this will help. So if you look, the first flyer is basically... It's just a general information. But the second flyer is the overview, and I just wanted to point out that Safety Village War... The Veterans Museum has been there before, as well as we will have the Indiana Fallen Heroes. They will have other placards again at Reader Park. And I want to thank Councilwoman Arvanitis. She had gotten us the Joe Cantafio, I think is how you say his name, but he's a veteran, and he is going to be providing music. She is the one that brought that to us and has secured him being there. So thank you for that. We also... There is a new foundation, fourteen forty-one, and they are... They... It's a foundation that was founded on... The founders had their son was a veteran, and he committed suicide. So they want to grow awareness of the suicide of our veterans, so they will be there. American Post four-eight-five, American Legion Post four-eight-five will be there. Chief Sormoz had suggested about a food truck, and Josh from the Park Department, actually, I found a veteran, and so the Sizzle Shack is actually going to be provided by... It's veteran-owned. So anyway, we hope that we're from this point forward. We're going to be continuing to plan it and promoting it. And so I want to just invite, and I hope that all of you will be able to come and attend. And again, thank you for your partnership, and I thank you for the team, Jim, and Andy, and Chief, and Bob, and Steve, and taking that vision and just helping us move it forward, so... And now Bob wants to just have a few words to say, too. And if you have any questions, you can let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. It's a wonderful event.
Thank you very much, and we appreciated the opportunity last year to be here amongst you that Saturday. And to understand what the D A V does, in a nutshell, we help veterans. So it's veterans helping veterans. And the way we help veterans is about three different ways. They only dwell on one. But when somebody becomes a veteran, they probably do some V A benefits, depending upon where they were, when they were there, et cetera, et cetera. And that's our job, to help them and to give them advice and to have them talk to people that know the ins and outs about how the V A works. Because if any of us in this room could figure out how the V A works, I want to shake your hand. One and one is not two, and a hundred percent is not fifty percent. So it's a very strange animal, and you need help. And a lot of people try to do it on their own through the website, and it doesn't work too well. And sometimes to look... To find these benefits, they'll go to a law firm that represents the opportunity to do that. But usually, there's a fee there of about thirty percent of what the person would be getting normally. And with the D A V, we work at no fee charge whatsoever because the D A V itself nationally pays our service officers to do that for the veterans that come to them. As they migrate through our system and become part of our organization, if they so choose to do so, they get to find out the things that we're doing, like this particular Saturday, and having a walk and letting people know and see what we're about. And some of the representations that will be there, such as the fallen heroes, such as the museum and things like that, are reminders of how we got here, the freedoms we have today. And I can only tell you that I wear this hat proudly because I spent thirteen months in Vietnam a long, long time ago, and I didn't want to go. They had to take me kicking and screaming. But today, I'm extremely proud to have spent time there. I was able to do positive things. We want to share those stories with you folks. And because we're here at the crossroads of the nation, it's very, very fitting to have an organization like ours pair with the township and with the three towns that represent this community because this is the heart and soul of the country. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. No questions.
Anyone have any questions for...
Looking forward to another great event.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Kathy. We'll move on. We have no old business. We'll move right into new business. Item A is ordinance two thousand seven, an ordinance amending the wholesale water tracker component of the rates and charges collected by the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana Municipal Water Utility and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Now, this... The first part in the Water Board meeting was the resolution. This is the ordinance amending that water tracker rate, so pretty much same explanation as I gave at that meeting.
Motion to approve ordinance two thousand seven?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second on ordinance two thousand seven. Roll call. Christie?
Yes. Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvanitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item B is ordinance two thousand eight, an ordinance establishing replacement and current regulations for licensure of solicitors in the town of Sherewell, Lake County, Indiana, repealing all ordinance and town code provisions or parts thereof in conflict here within and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. This is an ordinance that would allow nonprofits, nonprofits, excuse me, to solicit in the town of Sherewell. There's an application process as well as a fee that goes along with that. The solicitor must be licensed. This repeals the old solicitor ordinance that actually allowed for profit and not-for-profit, so this is just for the not-for-profit.
Just for clarification, Mr. President, I want to make sure what you said is what I heard. I heard you say, I think I heard you say, from this point forward, if this ordinance is adopted, for-profit businesses are no longer able to go door-to-door soliciting for business.
That is correct.
All right. Just want to make sure I heard. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve ordinance two thousand eight?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Motion to adopt ordinance two thousand eight? Second.
We have a motion, we have a second to adopt. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item C is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash four, is a resolution authorizing the entry into a joint interlocal cooperation agreement with another participating unit of local government, which is the Little Calum River Basin Redevelopment Commission for the Grand Canyon Watershed Project and all matters related thereto. Mr. Hanson, you have a report on it?
Yes. This project continues where we locked off last year at eighty fifty avenue near Sherwell Heights and it continues to decline avenue. It basically clears out all the silt in the ditch line to provide more water storage in that area of town.
Amy, for the audience, can you explain where that's at?
It's roughly right across the street from Longview Park.
So, this would be the long?
Right along the Pency Trail.
Well, right along the bike trail, that's what we call the Grand Canyon. Thank you, Amy.
Mr. President, just for clarification, it looks like the total project is estimated at sixty-four thousand and our portion's sixteen?
The total's eighty thousand, our portion would be sixteen thousand. Little Cal pays eighty percent, so sixty-four thousand, up to sixty-four thousand. I think it will be under that.
Sounds good. Thank you. Mr. President, motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash four, allowing entry into a joint interlocal cooperation agreement with another participating unit of local government, the Little Calum River Basin Development Commission for the Grand Canyon Watershed Project and all matters related thereto.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item D is an approved engagement letter with LWG CPAs for financial advisory services as it relates to establishing a municipal stormwater utility rate, and this came from the utility board of Genosse. Mr. Gorman, any comments?
No comments. Same.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item E is consider approval to purchase property located at three seventy-two West Division Street, Sherewell, Indiana, from the Agony Welding Systems Incorporated in the amount of two thousand nine hundred dollars? Is that correct? Two thousand nine hundred dollars and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, the clerk treasurer, and the town attorney to finalize the execution of the documents. This has to do with the Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Ms. Amy?
So, this was right away, this portion here on the screen, this purple portion right here, for expanding Kennedy Avenue, for putting a dirt lane in there on Division Street and also allowing the solicitors to go in there. So, this is for that project, this amount came out of the appraised value from the in-depth, from the process.
Thank you, Amy.
Motion to approve purchase of three seventy-two West Division Street right away in the amount of two thousand nine hundred dollars. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item F is consider the approval of purchase property located at five forty-nine Kennedy Avenue, Sherwell, Indiana, from Ray Rosinski in the amount of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars and to authorize the town manager, director of operations, clerk treasurer, and town attorney to finalize the execution of the documents. This also has to do with our Kennedy Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, this part, this entire parcel is purple here on the screen, just north of the, north of Southern River Tracks. This is for the one for the bridge. This is the entire parcel purchase. This one was actually in the condemnation process, with the property owners and into this price based on some appraisers he had, appraisal we had, and to actuate the process and then driven back into go to the whole condemnation process. And in that, he's also paying for this and able to prove this price as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item T is award bid for the wastewater treatment plant, a bio solids building project. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. We have a letter from our architects, CSK Architects, on Sherewell on Route Thirty. Mr. Gorman, town manager, in regards to the bio solids building project for the town of Sherewell's wastewater treatment plant, five fifty Kizer Boulevard, Sherewell, Indiana. Attached, please find the bid tally sheet for the above referenced project. We have reviewed the bid documents received on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and recommend awarding the contract and issuing a notice to proceed for the base bid number one and base bid number two for the apparent lowest responsive and responsible bidder as follows. Base bid number one, demolition of the existing bio solids storage building to Grimmer Construction Incorporated for two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Base bid number two, construction of the new bio solids storage building to Hasi Construction Company, Inc., four million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Total cost of the project is five million, nineteen thousand dollars. As a side note, please be advised, we distributed plans to over twenty contractors, including ten general contractors, but only received two bids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman.
Couple of questions, Mr. President. I guess I just want to make sure we're aware, or the public is aware, how we're funding this. It's my understanding, we have three million dollars of ARPA funds that have been allocated previously that we're going to be attributing to pay towards this project. St. John also has to pay thirty percent based on contractual agreements, because they dump thirty percent of the flow into our treatment plant, so that's one point five million and then we're going to, we're going to cover the rest of that, whatever it is, a little less than half a million or so.
Yeah, yes, you are correct. I misspoke earlier. It's actually three point two million we have in ARPA funds and then we do have a couple hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funds that have not been allocated yet. We may be able to contribute that to it as well, so, yes, you are correct.
All right, so we're not funding this, we're going to pay for this?
Correct.
Cash.
Yeah. This building, just to give you a little history, this building started out as a sludge drying building and it's where liquid sludge went on there and it dried naturally through greenhouse effect. It was in a building that had translucent panels on the sides and on the roof. It was built in nineteen eighty-three. It has, has become unsafe because of the environment was in, all the steel is rusting and, and it's not safe. So, what we're doing is we're putting in a, a fabric building with galvanized rudders around the top. So, that's, that's where the contractors whose building is, is coming up with that. And it doesn't actually, it's not actually a sludge drying building anymore, it's actually a storage building because we do have another facility that de-waters the sludge. So, once the sludge is de-watered, it gets stored on this building until we can haul it off and apply it to farmland in Lake, Lake County.
I guess now you've brought up some questions in my mind. What kind of guarantee do we have as far as how long this is going to last when it's storing?
It's got a twenty-five year life and the, the fabric can be replaced, but it is hot-dipped, galvanized, so the steel will not be an issue. And it, and it is fenced, there's no doors in the entry for the trucks to go in and, and loaders to load it up.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to award bid for the wastewater treatment plant bio solids building project as recommended by our CSK architects.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item A is consider acceptance of right-of-way easement agreement between the town of Sherewell, Lake County, Indiana and Enbridge Energy Limited Partnership. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Yes, this is a right-of-way easement agreement between the town and Enbridge Energy. It is a couple of pipelines. If you look at the rendering up here on the screen, that angled hundred-foot piece there is our Pency Trail that comes from Main Street at the Munster Sherewell border and comes all the way down to this point where it makes a, almost a little bit more than a ninety-degree turn and there are two pipes cross that easement. So, those pipes have been, been in the ground for many years. We just, we just got ahold of this property fifteen years ago, I think, and we built our trail on it, so they were just cleaning up their records and, and we came to this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item I is consider variance of use to allow eight hen chickens to be raised and kept on site in the residential zoning district R two and Juliet Street Overlay District. This is a board of zoning appeals case twenty-four dash three dash two. The petitioner is Justin Moore. The location is six thirty-six East Juliet Street. The BZA sent an unfavorable recommendation of three to one from their April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Mr. Gorman? Any comment?
No comments.
Mr. Moore is here. I have a couple of questions. One. Mr. Moore, thanks for coming.
Wait, Caleb, state your name and answer this, please.
Justin Moore, six thirty-six East Juliet Street.
Thanks for coming today. I, I had a couple of questions. I was at the BZA hearing on this and I just got a couple of follow-ups. How big is your lot?
Quarter acre.
And you have, it's zoned R two?
Yes.
And you have neighbors on each side of you on Juliet?
Yes.
Do you have any neighbors behind you?
No, sir.
What's behind you, the golf course?
Yes.
And you have eight chickens there now?
Yes, sir.
They are hens?
Yes, sir.
And they, they don't have a rooster that, that's in there with them, do they?
No, sir.
So, there's no cock-a-doodle-dooing in the morning or anything?
No, sir.
I, I, as everybody here knows, I'm sure, I used to own chickens in town for many years and I know from my experience, and I know you mentioned this at the hearing, but I guess I just want to make sure it's clear for everybody. Female chickens don't have to have a male chicken in order to lay eggs, for one, because that was a confusion point. Number two, the male chicken is the noisy one. The, the female chickens are very quiet during their laying times. They might make a little bit of moaning or whatever cooing noise is, but they don't, they don't make anywhere near what a rooster would make as far as noise goes. And I saw some pictures you have of, of a coop somewhere, or a picture. It looks like you have a house for the chickens and then you have a run for them to go out into the yard area that's all enclosed, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it has a roof over it and it's completely enclosed all the way around so that no animals or pests can get inside of that chicken coop?
That's correct.
How long have you had the chickens there?
August.
August? Have you had any complaints from your neighbors?
No, sir.
Any of your neighbors come over and enjoy the chickens?
I have one neighbor, yeah.
And you, and I saw a story in the, in the letter, talking about the fact that you got these chickens for your family and you got these chickens for your health, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you were trying to, to eat healthier, to have natural, organic chickens and eggs right there at home for your, for your enjoyment?
Yes, sir.
You're not selling these eggs, are you?
No, sir.
You're trying to live a healthy life just on your property, you're not bothering anybody?
No, sir.
Have you ever heard of or had any issues with your chickens escaping or getting over into your neighbor's yard or out onto Juliet or anything?
No.
Have you had any chicken attacks, where your chickens attacked anybody or injured anybody or hurt anybody?
No.
And do you clean your chicken coop? Do you clean the run and the, and the area where they do their business, so to speak, for lack of a better way of saying it?
Yes, sir.
And how do you dispose of that?
I actually put it in my garden.
All right. That's what I did with mine as well. Great fertilizer. Have you, have you had any issues with, with diseases on your chickens? Any sort of problems where you guys have gotten sick, you or your family?
No, sir.
I don't have more questions at this point.
One question, did any of your neighbors demonstrate during the whole process of you asking for the variance of use? Did they come to the BZA and basically object to what you were trying to receive from the BZA, you know, and approval of the variance?
No.
None of your neighbors object?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll tell you.
Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the variance of use to allow eight chickens to be raised on site in the residential zoning district R two and Juliet Overlay District. Board of Zoning Appeals Case twenty-four dash three dash two. Petitioner Justin Moore, location six thirty-six East Juliet Street. BZA unfavorable recommendation with a three-one vote. And I, only, this motion in support states that, I believe the petitioner has presented a good case to say that his use of this property is not, and allowing this use on this property is not detrimental to his neighbors, is not damaging his neighbors' property values, is not unhealthy in any way, shape, or form, which that evidence was presented at the BZA hearing by Michael Aurora, who contacted the ADA as well as the health departments, both locally and at the state level, and all of those departments indicated that they don't even regulate these types of coops because they're not unhealthy. There are no issues with those things. And that the petitioner has presented a reason that the variance of use is necessary because he wants to have a healthy living style and have chickens and be able to raise chickens for his family, have those eggs available to them for his company. And I find that he's demonstrated all of the criteria necessary to allow a variance and that's my new motion.
And I'll second, I'll add, you know, the one concern I had, I had a few others as well, Thompson and Johnson already mentioned, but the fact that your neighbors did reminds me, I think it's an important factor in that open up variance process. So, I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arvinitis?
No.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
No.
Tom Schmidt?
No. Motion denied, three to two. Item J is considered?
No, no, you still got to take action on it. You need to move it. You have to move on it so, so something, some action is taken on it. I made a motion to approve it, you guys denied it. Now you have to take some action, reject it or defer it, one of the two. Yeah, move on it so, so something, some action is, is taken on it. I made a motion to approve it, you guys denied it. Now you have to take some action, reject it, or defer it, one of the two. Somebody's gotta make a motion.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny the variance of use, roll call, Mr. President.
This is a bit more explanation so we can make sure that we're clear there on the record. Councilman Johnson is exactly correct, there needs to be three votes in favor of any of that. That would be for approval, or denial, or for control, three votes. That didn't happen in the first motion. It made two votes in favor, and this is now the new process. That's three.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. We have a motion-
Clarical, motion to deny the Board of Zoning Appeals Case twenty four dash three dash two.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
No.
Robin Arbonitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
No.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes. Motion to deny, carries three to, thank you. Item J is considered variance of use to allow a drive-through lane within the US forty one Commercial Corridor Overlay District. It's border zoning case appeals case twenty four dash four dash three. The petitioner is Kenneth Drenth, the location is seventy seven twenty five US forty one Boulevard Commons, Lot one. The BZA favorable recommendation of four to zero came on April twenty second, two thousand twenty four meeting. Good evening, Ken, nice to see you.
Good evening, uh, Kent Drenth, Boulevard Commons, uh, here seeking a variance for a drive-through. Uh, the property is located on east side of forty one, about one block south of seventy seventh. Uh, currently at the first building, and the north building is constructed near completion. Uh, we were granted a drive-through variance for that building on the north end. Uh, here tonight, seeking a variance for the south building. It would be the northwest unit for a drive-through.
Mr. President, if I may- Ken, I love the building, I love the project, I, I have a concern, though. And it's, and it's just a, a simple, I think, traffic concern, and it was something that was addressed originally when you came in the first time, and you wanted the two building drive-throughs approved. And there was talk about that road on the east side of the building being one-way going north. And then this drawing shows it going both north and south. And I'm very concerned because the little red dash that's up there on the north side of the building where the drive-through is, that's your order board, I believe? And you only got one car stacking availability before the order board. And I'm really concerned that if you get a second car, now you're blocking traffic there. And if you make that road all northbound traffic, and you put the whole left side there by the curb as additional stacking for your drive-through, I'm a hundred percent in favor. If you leave it two-way, I'm voting no, okay? So if you're, if you're willing to do that, I'm happy with this project, I'm happy with your, your, I'm only one vote, but I'm happy with your drive-through lane. So if you agree to that, I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, that, that won't be an issue. Um, Star's location for the menu board, um, it would definitely be, you know, further west towards the center of the building. Yeah, I don't have a problem with either of your suggestions.
Okay. Yeah, a li- a little bit of marking just showing this is, this is all on the north, and this is for the drive-through on the left side so that people on the right side can still get passed to that second drive-through. I don't want that second business up there on the north with the drive-through being like, hey, where's my, where's my customers? They're all stuck behind the other-
Right, right, and, and the two, uh, we have a tenant in the north building, they're morning, they're donuts coffee. Uh, this would be, uh, more the lunch and crap, lunch and air crap, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So, so you're, I guess I just want to make sure, so you're agreeable with the, the change in the plan?
Traffic flow?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Mr. Johnson, is that wording in your motion?
I'll make that motion, Ken.
I'll second it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make the motion, hang on, Rob, let me make it quick. Mr. President, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, uh, variance of use to allow a drive-through within the US Commercial, US forty one Commercial Corridor Overlay District, Board of Zoning Appeals Case twenty four dash four dash three. Petitioner Kent Drenth, seventy seven two five, US forty one Boulevard Commons, Lot one. BZA, uh, favorable recommendation four oh from the April twenty second, two thousand twenty four meeting, and adopt their findings of fact and conclusions into my motion. And I'm gonna add an additional condi- a couple of conditions. One, you, you said you would move that, uh, order board a little bit more towards the center of the building to give a little bit more room there, and you're going to make that, uh, roadway on the east side of the building all northbound with the left side of that, that road, additional stacking for that drive-through in this building. Uh, and, and give plenty of marking and then that sort of stuff.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Yeah, I'll second my motion.
We have a motion, I have a question for Mr. Austin. Uh, Mr. Austin, do we have to treat this like on, on a BZA case where the petitioner has to announce that he agrees to them? And, and you agree to that, Mr. Drenth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arbonitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Item K is to consider release of maintenance security, cash security in the amount of twenty one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents, and issuance of the certificate of release for the Oak District Phase One. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, this is for the Oak District Development, Public Works and East Engineering will review this, and it's appropriate to release this at this time.
And, uh, for the, for the audience, the Oak District is, tell, tell us the location.
This is a Chick-fil-A area.
On forty one.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arbonitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Item L is considered donation for Lake Central Education Foundation for one thousand dollars. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, this is an annual request we get from the Lake Central Education Foundation, and it is the same request we received last year, and the same amount.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Abstain, I'm on the board.
Robin Arbonitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries four one, one abstain. I mean, four oh, and one abstain, I'm sorry. Thank you. Item M, M is consider proclaiming the week of May fifth, two thousand twenty-four through May eleventh, two thousand twenty-four as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week in the Town of Sheroville. I'd like to read a pro- proclamation into the, into the minutes. This is the fifty-fifth Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week from May fifth to May eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists through the world, and whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at, at other level, at other levels, and whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state provisions, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it, it, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Thomas Schmidt, President of the Town Council here in Sheroville, do recognize the week of May fifth through May eleventh, two thousand twenty-four as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Michael A. Traxel, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and the exhilarating dedication to the communities they represent. Dated this day, eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arbonitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
Tom Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Next item is Item N is consider acceptance of donations for eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. Uh, Christie, would you mind reading those fours, please?
Yes, the donations we received in April of twenty-four were all in-kind donations. Uh, we received a total of eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. Of that, six hundred and sixty dollars of in-kind donations went to animal control, and two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents went to the police department itself. The following donations were to animal control. Debbie Volunteer Treats for Dogs and Cats, estimated value fifty dollars. Anonymous Dog Treats Towels Dog Collars, estimated value one hundred dollars. Another anonymous Treats and Toys, one hundred and fifty dollars. Anonymous Medical Supplies and Pads, twenty dollars. Nanette Williams Miscellaneous House, thirty dollars. Kathy, no last name, litter boxes and a cat tower, fifty dollars. Another one named Jamie, no last name, blankets, forty dollars. An anonymous case of canned dog food, twenty dollars. And Tiffany Beaster Bower Dog Treats and Accessories, totaling two hundred dollars. To the police department, they received from Crossroads Animal Hospital, a well, a wellness visit for their canine hawk, estimated value two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents, and that is all.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Motion to accept?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a roll call.
Caleb Johnson?
Yes.
Robin Arbonitis?
Yes.
Kevin Conley?
Yes.
Rob Getzloff?
Yes.
And Tom Schmidt?
Yes, motion carries five zero, thank you. At this time, we'll open business from the floor. Is there any business from the floor? Please step up with your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Ted McGookie, living eleven twelve Willbrook Drive in Sheroville. Lived in my home about, uh, ten years, um, in that subdivision. What we noticed is there's a detention pond in the center of the subdivision. In this specific subdivision, it has a high concentration of iron ochre. So besides it having a high water table, what the residents deal with in the homes is there are some pumps completely getting clogged, their PVC getting clogged, their main lines out to the sewers are getting clogged. So what the homeowners in this subdivision feel is that the detention pond would need to be dredged along with the Sheroville ditch, it's by understanding, just speaking via email for Chad recently, we, we have not met officially. Um, Jim, nice to meet you. So this is something that you're having people build brand-new homes anywhere from five to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They get in their home, and within one year, they're flooding, not only because of water coming in the foundation, traditionally like a home floods, because, but because of this vacuum of iron ochre. What I realize is it's not something that's not gonna go away, this is a, a natural occurrence in this specific area. This is something that I feel needs dire dedication from Sheroville. I've also spoke with, um, Dan Repay, just because I didn't know where to start first. So this is something that's been going on ever since the subdivision first started. So my basic amateur interpretation is it's, it's not gonna be something that's gonna go away, but this is something that has to be maintained. As far as what I understand, the last time that the Sheroville Creek was dredged at this location was approximately two thousand and eight. And as far as the detention pond, I do not know when the last time that would have been dredged. So what this entails is all the stormwater from the detention pond gets pumped across the street and gets dumped into the Sheroville ditch per two pumps. But Chad, you're, we are aware of this whole situation, right?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, this is just something that, every, I'd say seventy-five percent of the homeowners to ninety percent of homeowners deal with this problem. And there's nothing that we can physically do to correct it. So what we're hoping is in some way that this pond can be dredged, because it's, it's the same thing to perfectly explain this. If you have a some pump basin, like everyone has in their basin, as it fills up with water, it pumps it out. So this iron just completely fills and fills and fills, whether your pump is running or whether it's not running. So that in the lake, oh, I'm sorry, so in the lake, what happens is that the sedimentation just fills up and entail just raising the groundwater. I'm aware that this, um, area has a high water table, there's nothing we can do to fix that. But the problem is that with this high water table and with the ditch filling up and with the pond filling up, the homeowners have no solution at their hands except in hopes of having that ditch dredged. So that's basically, one other thing I would like to read, if it's okay, this is from a study. I know this is ancient, but this should shows a history of this area. This was done, I'm sure you guys are familiar with the T-Bolt Nature Preserve Master Plan, it's back in two thousand and eleven. They did a study because they, the area behind us was wetlands, and they wanted to build a trail and kind of facilitate that. I know in two thousand and eight, things took a downturn, that probably took a backseat, as you all know. So their study just came up with something under, um, groundwater. Per their study, groundwater near the site is reported to be high. According to the Town of Sheroville Public Works, some pumps in the homes in the adjoining Stonebridge subdivision run almost continuous during most season. The design team studied the potential of providing deeper regional detention facilities, but due to the high water table, it would not serve as additional water storage. So that I understand, there's maybe deepening, this is not gonna make the water table go down. But in the situation we're in, there's absolutely nothing the homeowners can do to correct this, but by some pump after some pump after some pump. And the one other thing that is brought up, that their study showed that due to the historical flooding that occurs along portions of the Sheroville ditch, Dire Ditch, and Downstream Heart Ditch, dredging the sedimentation from the regional detention pond should be considered. This will not only have the potential to improve flood control, but also the potential to improve water quality within the water features. Me, myself, have read about the projects that you are all doing, and I think it's great, and in every report, it says about removing sediment, removing sediment. So for you guys to spend all this money, or even Lake County spends a certain amount, you spend a certain amount, as clean as you get it, and then this pond with all this iron ochre gets pumped back into the Sheroville ditch and Dire Ditch, and wherever goes after that, it's just one continuous thing that I think if the origin of this, to a degree, is dealt with, it may be beneficial for everyone. Thank you very much, well said, thank you.
Thank you very, uh, Mr. Gorman, and Andy, and Chad, how do you, uh, have you set up a meeting with this gentleman?
We have not, but I'll take his information, and we can do that. Let me, let me say one thing about this, that pump station for the subdivision there, the set points are set at certain levels where the pumps kick on, the pumps kick off, okay? The, the upper set point, when they turn on, we deem to the point where, um-
The the upper set point when they turn on, we deem to the point where it helps keep the basements drier and the some pumps don't run as much as they have in the past. That was that was a change that we made last year. We lowered it down about a quarter of a foot or so. Jim and Andy and I met with a homeowner out there, but it's something we can look at. Station's fully operational, but there is a there is this issue with the orange material in the piping.
Okay.
So I, excuse me, Mr. President, go ahead. So back in two thousand and eight, when they they did the dredging, it helped to solve the situation?
I was not in the subdivision in two thousand and eight, but I know there may be someone in the audience that I think would have been, as far as there was some additional homeowners here.
I mean, it only makes sense to probably dredge it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure we need to get everybody to know.
Okay. Yes, I would recommend you get in the hole to Chad and he'll set up a meeting with you.
Okay.
With staff.
Okay. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other business from the floor?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Alex Ferreira of two three three Fairview Lane. I'm a twenty two year resident of Sheroville.
Uh, sir, I'm sorry, what 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 lane?
Uh, two three three Fairview Lane.
Fairview, okay.
Yes. I'm a twenty two year resident of Sheroville. I would like if the town of Sheroville would consider including a crime and drug free lease addendum, such as the one I am presenting today, for all residential lease agreements in Sheroville to help deter criminal activity and to remove noncompliant tenants. I believe including this drug, this crime and drug free lease addendum will help keep Sheroville a low crime community and keep it as one of the best places to live in Indiana. It's it's a mere idea that I'm presenting here, wondering if if you would consider adding into lease agreements for tenants.
Um, I would suggest that, once again, I would suggest that you meet with our staff, maybe someone from the police department and our town staff, set up an appointment with them and have you discuss that with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other business from the floor?
Jeff Minar of twelve seventy nine Poppy Field. I appreciate the opportunity to talk, which is great for the town to come out and talk, but I'm very disappointed to continue to see this partisanship going on. It it seems suspicious to me how we always vote no for any exceptions for chickens, but yet the same person that brought out that Councilman Johnson had chickens is the same person you've been trying to put on a public safety board since January and hasn't qualified to do so. So I'm just very disappointed, but thanks for the opportunities to speak.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor?
Hi, my name is Anton Morris. I stay eleven nineteen Stone Bridge Drive. I am one of those new tenants in that subdivision. I believe I've been in there about two and a half years. My basement flooded like three times, you know? I'm from Chicago originally, never dealt with a sub pump, never in my life. It is very sad, you know? I just wanted to address that, you know, something really serious. Thank you.
Question for you. You said your 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 basement has flooded three times since you've been here?
Yes. I'm on my second, my second sub pump. You know, I was out of town for about eight months. You know, it's like you can't even go, you can't go nowhere, you know? You can't go nowhere. My mother in law was living there at the time, staying there for me, and she couldn't do nothing, you know? So I my water, the water just had to sit in my basement till I got back into town, you know? But yes, three times. Yes.
Um, once a, once again, our public works director, I'll meet with him and and schedule a meeting with him.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor?
Kevin Dean, nineteen oh five, Sir Richard Road. I want to thank the council this month for not giving away any of the tax dollars to certain entities that they feel were in need of my tax money. I do appreciate that. I listened today to this person who wants to raise chickens on his property and you're saying no to that. I can understand concerns that his neighbors were complaining about it, but since it seems from the testimony, there are questioning that Mr. Caleb did, that there were no actual complaints. I'd like to know, why is the city council taking this action against this person if there hadn't been any complaints? That's all.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor? No other business. This means adjourned. Have a good night.